Plaid allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Monday, October 2nd Board of Alderman Meeting. The first order of business is minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So, second.
Alright, so we have a motion. It has been seconded. Any corrections or revisions to the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So, we're going to move on to opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters not on the agenda. If you're here from the public to speak to the board, I just ask that you step to the podium, state your name and town of residence, and so the folks on PEG TV can pick up your audio. Anyone from the public here to address the board? Seeing and hearing none? We'll move on to communications from the mayor.
Okay. Good evening. So, tonight, I'd like to talk about housing. One of the key tenants towards revitalizing our community and transforming our journey here in Rutland is to ensure access to quality housing for all people. If you take a look, I left this on your desks. I left there some for the public out on the front desk on your way out. This is the regional housing needs assessment. This is actually a very short version of a very long document that has been simplified for a quick view. I think one of the key things to take a look at here is that number, that 7690. That's the year on households we expect to move to Rutland County by 2040. I don't know if any of you have recognized this, but there's not a lot of places for people to move right now. So, if we have 7,690 people expected, based on the study, to move to Rutland County, that's a big challenge. If you look at that other number below the percentage, you can see that 2,150 are expected in Rutland. Rutland City stands at a pivotal moment in its history. Working collaboratively lately has been absolutely amazing. We've got some great partners. We want to look to work with developers and the community as a whole. I think we have a real opportunity to make the future really bright here for our residents. With the city currently undergoing a rewrite of its zoning laws, with the state having passed Act 47, which is the zoning rewrite at the state level, which changes the way we have to follow some of those rules, and with our vacancy rate at an all-time low, I believe there's no better time than right now to set a goal, which you'll hear about in a second, and get started with the next stage of development in our city. I'm excited to announce a transformative goal to create new housing in Rutland City. In collaboration with our housing partners, including the Housing Trust of Rutland County, Neighbor Works of Western Vermont, and the Rutland Housing Authority, the Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Region, the RRA, and the Regional Planning Commission, and others, I've set a new goal of bringing 1,000 new housing units online in the city within the next five years. This is a bold and ambitious target, I'm well aware, and a target that I believe reflects our determination to provide all types of housing from affordable to market rate and beyond in our city. Setting this target reinforces our commitment to addressing housing challenges, promoting economic growth, and fostering inclusivity. In conjunction with this announcement, Rutland City is officially opening applications for the Rutland Rehab Revolving Loan Fund this Friday. So, this Friday, the low-interest fund will allow Rutland City property owners to apply for loans to up to $30,000 per unit to rehabilitate their market-rate properties for rental. This is the same loan fund that we have been working on for well over a year here in the city, and it is going live this Friday, and you can find that information on the city website Friday morning. With the Rental Rehab Revolving Loan Fund, the city can provide low-interest loans to those landlords who want to invest in our community and make housing available to those who need it to help accelerate the housing process and the acceleration of that goal. The link to Rutland's, I'm sorry, the link to the city's rehab revolving loan program is going to be live Friday because we're just finishing up a few of the documentation pieces, but it will be available, like I said, on Friday morning. Our job now as a community is to remove barriers to development and collaborate effectively with housing partners, landowners, developers, and other stakeholders to ensure Rutland sees the growth and increased population, I guess is a good way to say that, that it's prepared for, that we are actually prepared for. We just need to build the places now. On that front, there'll be a Homes For All event focused on infill design. This is to be held on Thursday, October 19th. The state of Vermont is hosting this, along with their consultant team, and they will be here in Rutland City. It's 2:00 PM at the hub. There'll be a presentation, and at 3:00 PM, there'll be a walking tour right after that presentation. For more information on this event, you can also check out the city website, which will link you to the state. The last note on this, I just want to say, you know, Rutland has always been open for business. We've always wanted to see growth in our community. These aren't new things. The difference that I feel right now is everybody is on the same sheet of music. We're all headed in the same direction. All of our partners are focused on growth, and there is a need that is clearly defined by this housing study that we can be prepared for and set up for. Any questions on that?
Alderwoman Davis.
So, do we have a copy of the housing study that shows what stock is available? We know we're kind of landlocked. We don't have a lot of building lots, but...
Yes, I believe it was sent out about a month ago to everybody, but I can send it again, just to put it at the top of your inbox.
So, we have showing, so I guess my question maybe is, like, if there's a, currently a two-family home, are we encouraging that those are going to be four-family homes, or...
So, the new legislation from the state allows any property connected to water and wastewater with some restrictions to be up to four units. Sometimes there's not room to do four units in a building, right? Sometimes there's not room to do four units on a property, so it'll be up to those property owners to choose whether they want to expand and grow those facilities. However, I have had people prior to this new law being passed actually call and say, "Hey, can we do four units in this building?" The answer was no, but the answer's now yes. So, there are properties that are available for that. There are also units that are offline because people who maybe had a mother-in-law apartment or just an apartment above their home have chosen to take those units offline for various reasons over the years. And, you know, if we create, if you think about, and you hear me say it all the time, undoing this logjam, if we create space for people living in a home that may have two units to go to a home with a single family, which you can't do right, right? Moving around is really difficult. But if we create that space, then that two-unit could be possibly taken over by someone who wants to rent out that second unit. So, things like that will help with this call, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Sure. Alderwoman Hooker.
So, do we have an accurate assessment of how many units there are that are offline? Of blighted, I mean, we've talked about blighted property. We're talking about vacant buildings.
Yeah. So, there's, in the housing study, there's also, it talks regionally, again, there's about 2,400 units in Rutland County offline. There's a good, at least 10% of those are in Rutland from the data that we have. If we want to do a deeper dive, we can extend that housing study to Rutland-specific. Remember, this is the one that we talked about a while ago where we set the money aside in, from my contingency, that we ended up not using because they were doing a regional study, and we wanted to wait till the regional study came out to see if we wanted to do the Rutland one. The numbers are pretty, pretty strong, though, to say that we're going to need those housing units as we go.
Thanks.
Okay? Any other questions? Alright, so I do have one more thing. There is, on the housing piece as well, there is a new piece of technology that is coming from our clerk's office called Property Check. So, Property Check allows you to go online and sign up, and you can put your name and your address and a couple other key points of information into a form, and what this will do is it'll keep monitor, it'll monitor property records for you, and if there's a change to, say, a deed, so let's say you own a home, and that deed all of a sudden changes out of your name, you'll get an alert, right? The idea, basically, this, that property and deed fraud has become pretty prevalent in the United States with a lot of things going on digitally. So, the clerk's office sought out this software, and we found that this would be a good thing to do. It's like, it's the same thing, you think about it as like credit report protection, but it's more for your properties. Any question on that? Awesome. That's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Alright, moving on to additions and deletions to the agenda. We have a request to move the special event permits up on the agenda before reports and letters, and we'll move Chief Kilkellin's request for an executive session to the end.
I'll move.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion, and it's been seconded to make these changes to the agenda. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, so we'll move on to petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications. We have a special event permit request for the Running Scared 5K to be held on October 28th. The permit request form is on pages 63 to 64 of your packet.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
So, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the approval of the Running Scared 5K to be held October 28th at 11:00 AM till 1:00 PM.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve the request, and it's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Alderwoman McClure.
I would just like to ask if there's a representative of the event present to let us know the route for the Running Scared, for anyone who might not be familiar.
Thank you. And I would like to highlight that we are making a change this year. We're going to be highlighting the creek path. So, we're going to be starting at George Eddie Park and then run over to the rec center. So, we will have some road closures. We're going to be discussing that on Thursday with the department heads because it is different, but we are excited. We really want to highlight the creek path that has been worked on so, so well. I've run it many times. It's a great, we'll have to make a couple detours because we're still missing a couple sections, but that is the new route that we're taking.
Great. Any additional questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And next, we have a special event permit request for the annual Rutland Halloween Parade to be held on October 28th. The permit request form is on pages 65 to 66 of your packet.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
So, we have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve the special event permit request, and it's been seconded. Alderwoman Savage.
What's the theme this year?
I don't, I don't think there's really a theme. They don't really put a theme. It's just, be Halloween.
Good theme.
They kind of got away from the themes a couple years ago.
Alderwoman McClure and Alderman McCann.
Just to rehash the same question, could you let us know the route for the parade as well for any new community members who might not be familiar?
Well, it goes down Strong's, which again, we'll hope is going to be ready, but either way, it's the same route that we've had. I don't have all the directions, but down Strong's is the main part of it.
Turns on West Street.
Yes, thank you.
Turns on Mercer's Row and comes back.
Ends up in Walmart.
Yes.
Alderman McCann.
Two questions, if I can. So, looking at the street closures, there's a note that they would start getting kind of closed off at 4:45. We're staging a start at 5:00. Is 15 minutes enough time?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, and we have a couple items that we do do. We put some cones up, and we put parking up, and again, we meet on Thursday with all department heads to just go through it very specifically. All the road closures will be on our website. The mayor's already been given them as much communication as we can give.
Great. And then, just looking at the number of people here, it's a great event, and a couple weeks ago, we had a successful Whoopi Pie Festival, but there were some photos that went around online of the trash receptacles downtown sort of not getting cleaned up sort of quickly after the event, so I don't know if you have had experience with that in the past with this event, or if there's any way to sort of remediate that.
We've never had any negatives besides we do go around, so our entire staff is there going down the streets and picking up. I believe Downtown Partnership and maybe Casella, or maybe Lyle wants to, I don't, did you want to say something? Oh.
That's us. I have a plan for that.
Okay, perfect.
But I do not think it's an awful idea to put on our special events permit, how will you take care of garbage? I think that would be a good addition because then it does get the event person thinking about that. So, I don't think it would be an awful idea to put that on the event permit if it's not already on there.
It's on the electronic version, but because we had problems, we had to give you the paper copy, and it wasn't on the paper copy, but...
So, it's been added.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Alderwoman Hooker.
Thank you. And can you tell us what number Halloween Parade this is?
This would be 61, I believe. Yes.
It's amazing.
I believe it's amazing.
61 or 62. There's a little bit of a discrepancy.
It's longer, you know why?
Seems like it should be longer.
We remember the beginning.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve the request, and it's been seconded, seeing no additional discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And next, there's a special event permit amendment to the route for the Wonder Feet Truck or Treat on October 22nd. The details are on pages 67 to 70 of your packet, and I believe this should be for information only.
I'll move to receive and place on file.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion to receive and file. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First, we have Barbara Spalding from the RRA with a municipal planning grant resolution. There's a memo and a copy of the resolution on pages 1 to 2 of your packet.
Good evening. So, in conjunction with the city creating a committee to work on a capital improvement plan, the city is applying for a municipal planning grant to help fund a consultant to assist in the plan's development. The application is due November 1st, and both Andrew and I will be working on the application. The city planning commission signed the resolution in support of the application on September 12th, and we're asking that this board sign the same resolution in support of this application tonight.
Move to suspend the rules to take the matter up tonight.
Second.
So, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Alderwoman Davis?
Just a question, because the format's a little different, and I don't know if it's because the grant setup is a little different, but that it defines the mayor's role, your role, and then Barbara. And usually, it's just a request for the grant. The board approves. So, I was wondering if there's a different process that, will the board not see these grants as they come through, or...
You will see the grant when it comes through, but this will allow us to go ahead and sign the grant agreement when it is offered to the city.
So, we'll see it, but you'll be able to take action on it quick.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I knew, I just felt like there was something different, and I wasn't quite sure what it was.
Good question. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Move to circulate for signatures.
Second.
And we have a motion to circulate for signatures, and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
You, and you're up again with a request that the board approve a $10,000 forgivable loan to Head Over Heels as part of the Business Incentive and Assistance Program.
Thank you. So, Candace Munson is requesting a $10,000 buy-up forgivable loan to assist in the expansion of Head Over Heels, an educational gymnastics center located at 129 Forest Street in Rutland. Head Over Heels has been a staple in Rutland for the past 28 years, with many of the children who went through the program returning as coaches. The gymnastics center survived COVID with the assistance of an emergency loan program and has paid that loan back in full. Two years ago, Head Over Heels moved from North Main Street to Forest Street and is now looking at an expansion. The expansion requires the purchase of equipment that Candace will describe, and the total cost is $23,260. The application meets the criteria for the request through $10,000 of new financial investment, and Candace is here to discuss her vision and answer any questions.
Candace Munson, I've been involved with Head Over Heels for the entire 28 years that's been in business, either as a parent, a teacher, and now the owner. I'm on my 15th year of owning the business, and we have the opportunity to expand slowly. We're in a new location, which is three times larger than what we were on North Main Street. So, if anybody's been in that North Main Street location, you can imagine having all that space. It's pretty amazing. The last two years, we were getting our feet wet, figuring out what we wanted to do, what we, which direction we want to go, and taking a look at replacing some equipment that took its toll through COVID, being in storage, taking a look at moving forward with a team because we have had a request for that, and taking a look at being able to expand into some toddler playground-ish things. So, all that requires a little more money and a little more equipment, you know, so any questions anybody has as to what we're looking for. Our set of bars, our uneven bars that we have are not able to be hooked up at this time in a normal fashion because we're sitting on asphalt, so that requires a weighted base, which is close to $6,000. Our previous set of uneven bars can be set up, but it is not competition size, so that was kind of a juggle as to, you know, if we want to do competition, we want to look at what we need for equipment. A new spring floor would be another addition, which everybody's really excited about, and I think they're expecting it when I go back to the gym this afternoon. So, yeah, it's, we're just looking at moving forward, having more kids, having more staff, having more programs and other events, our special events that we do, and, yeah.
Alderwoman Tadio.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
So, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Gillum and then Alderman Coopley.
Guys, vote first, and we'll put the motion on the floor.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I would make a motion to approve the $10,000 buy-up forgivable loan to Head Over Heels.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve. It's been seconded. Alderman Gillum and Alderman Coopley.
For people at home, where are you located on Forest Street?
We moved to the old Max Sam Tennis Courts, 129 Forest Street.
Oh, excellent. They really improved that property. That is looking really good. It's helping the neighborhood. Unfortunately, the neighbor next door needs to do something, so you've done your share. Thank you.
I'll try to pass the positive vibes that way.
Alderman Coopley.
Yeah, Candace, I have a, how many students do you have enrolled in your program?
We fluctuate right now in our new location, fluctuate between 115 to 125. The old location, we live somewhere around 75 to 95, so just moving and having a larger space has really increased, increased the children. We still have a number of people that come in for birthday parties and are like, "We didn't know you moved." I'm like, "Yes, we did." So, the word is getting out. I anticipate by the first of the year, I'll have 140 kids and continue just going up from there.
In the ages?
Most of the kids are ages 12 and under.
Oh, yeah.
We do a lot with 16 months to probably age 5 is the largest group right now, which is pretty awesome, and that's kind of my thing, the little ones.
Thank you.
It's exciting. Thank you.
Alright, all those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have DPW Commissioner Protivansky with a number of items. First is a communication about the water service line inventory.
As many of you know, we were mandated by the state and EPA to do a service line, water service line inventory of every business and residence. Just want to raise a little public awareness about it and invited MSK Engineering here to explain a little bit about the process and how we can all work together and get it done. It's quite a tall order, 6,000 places to, like...
Thanks, Bob. It's a pleasure to be here. When I was last here, it was back, I want to say earlier, March-April timeframe, and I was talking about the need to take out a planning loan to start doing a service line inventory project, and I'm pleased to be here this evening, like Bob said, to talk about project progress briefly, but also hopefully to help solicit help raising community awareness of this project. Really, what we're trying to do is look at the pipe materials of all the drinking water pipes where they come into each building. There are about 6,200 pipes in the city, and we need to figure out what those materials are. We've been reviewing all of the old records we could find, and now we're at the stage where we're going out to different portions of town and trying to get residents to either sign up and make appointments with us so that one of our field technicians could come in and in about five minutes identify their pipe materials and move on. We've also given people an option so that they could, if they wanted to and had the ability, they could upload a photo of their service line pipe and email it directly to us or upload it to our database. We'll review it, and if we have follow-up questions, we'd pursue it. And we are also going door-to-door canvassing neighborhoods, trying to raise everyone's awareness of the project, leaving door hangers and trying to get into buildings to look at service line pipes. What would be extremely helpful would be if you have any questions from your constituents about, is this project really happening? Are MSK engineers having anything to do with the city? If you would either answer their questions or forward on my contact information, I'd be happy to step in and answer any questions, but really helping to get the word out and raise public awareness will, will help increase the success of the project.
Alderwoman Davis?
See, they were in our, my neighborhood.
Okay.
And knocked on the door.
Yeah.
And I had not uploaded the picture because I really didn't want to go down and sell it.
I wouldn't either.
So, anyways, so they said, "Oh, we'll do it for you," and they were very professional, came in, went downstairs, did their thing, told me we were alright, knocked the door they went. And I don't know how many other houses in the neighborhood they did, but they were, they were wonderful. They did a great job.
Thank you.
Alderman McCann and then Alderman Gillum.
Thanks. I was wondering if you have any stats on sort of where you are in progress, you know, how many houses have you gotten information on, either from the paper copies or from uploads so far, or in-person?
Sure. Jason.
So, I've got, Jason is my lead field technician, and he's the one that actually does all the work, so if you don't mind, I'd like to have Jason hit and answer the question about stats, or give me the numbers.
Thanks. I got it. So, thank you for having us again, and so the door-to-door effort requires a lot of manpower, and that's what we're really asking for help with in raising awareness. To date, we've knocked on a little over 850 homes, and we have about, about 25% response rate. So, we'll knock on the door. If we don't get an answer, we leave a little door hanger on their door saying, "Hey, we came by. This is our project, and this is what we're working on." We give them the option of self-reporting or calling us and making an appointment at that time, but our response rates have been a little less than what we've hoped for, and that's what we're here for today, is to try to raise awareness, try to ask you all who live in the community how we can best engage the community and get them to respond better, but roughly, our response rates have been about 25 to 30% through various means. Any other?
Alderman Gillum.
Well, he answered most of my questions. What's the time certain, mayor? What do you have to end this project?
October 17.
Next, Jeff.
Alderwoman Hooker and then Alderwoman Davis.[1675.86]
Just curious to know what you're doing as a, as a company to get the word out.
So we, excuse me, we start by sending an initial mailer to everybody that we have contact information for. We give them all a reporting option, some background and some information on why we're doing it. That's the beginning of it. We usually give that about two to three weeks after it hits the streets to see what our response rate is, and then from there, we start compiling a door-to-door list and hitting the neighborhood in person.
So have you used like social media to?
We've asked the city to post on Front Porch Forum and on the website. We do not have any social media per se from MSK. We asked that the city do that so that it adds an air of legitimacy and authenticity, and it's not coming from us. It's coming from the city. It looks a little better that way. And one of the things that I struggle with, and a lot of other companies I'm sure do, is we get a lot of questions is of, are you legitimate? Are you with the city? You know, do you have some identification or things of that nature? So a lot of it's just trying to raise awareness, and I feel that word-of-mouth and face-to-face is best for that.
I know.
Anybody can post something on social media, but...
We had someone come to our house. It only takes a minute.
Yeah, yeah.
Down and chat.
Nine times out of 10, we're in and out in less than two minutes, and we're always happy to answer any questions that people have in the field.
I think he answered my question. I was wondering if it was, the information was on the city website that this is being done and how to contact.
We invited them here as an initial public awareness. This week, we're going to send an email to all of you with the, with the information on how to do this. We're going to put it on the website and Facebook.
And hopefully, with Gordon sitting over there, he'll put a contact number or any article that should help.
It's legitimate.
Great. Alderman McCann?
If I'm remembering correctly, if, if a, if a property doesn't get it verified from the, the consumer side, the requirement for the city to verify it would essentially require us to dig it up on the street side. Does that, am I remembering that correctly?
Well, sort of. I, I think the easiest way to summarize it is if people don't respond and we make multiple attempts and we can't get ahold of somebody, then we will likely end up with saying, "Well, we don't know what the service line materials are." That's an acceptable outcome for the scoping study. But if you do that, then you need to also put together a strategy document that, one of the touchstones on the strategy document is called the Lead Service Line Replacement Plan. But a big piece of it is how are you going to identify all these pipes that you said are unknown materials? And that's where we'll get into different methods. It may include digging up homes, digging up pipes in front of homes. It might include also different types of water quality samples that can be collected and analyzed, and you can look at the data that you collect to determine whether there's a lead pipe there or not. So that's all a little bit to be determined, but you're on the right track.
But the, the more that we can get from this consumer side, the cheaper or the less time that's going to take later on.
Bingo. Yep.
Anything additional from the board? Mayor Dungeons?
I just have a question about tenants versus property owners. I think a lot of the city renters, they get the tab on their door and think that that's on landlord or what's, what's the best process?
Right. So I think we're, the way that we're currently going about it, we're providing all of the social media postings and website, obviously, hopefully will catch the attention of both landlords and residents. The initial mailings are going out and being directed towards the property owners because they're the ones that own the pipe, and they're the ones that we're trying to get ahold of. But when we're going door-to-door, we're obviously in a situation where we're talking directly to residents. So we are trying to communicate with both. It would be great if we do know, oh, there are certain landlords that maybe we should try to engage with differently than sending a letter if you had any advice on that front. We'd, we'd certainly be open to it.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time this evening.
We have Commissioner Protovansky again with a request to authorize the mayor to sign a design contract amendment for the Meadow Street Storm Water Separation Project. This is on pages seven to 17 of your packet.
Yeah, this is a contract amendment for $4,200 for additional soil evaluation because of the commercial zone it's in, and also a little archaeo, archaeological evaluation that's mandated as part of this.
I entertain a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Move, move to authorize the mayor to sign the contract amendment, one in the amount of NTE for $4,200 with Eldridge and Elliott to perform an additional engineering design services, archaeology, and soil evaluation for the Meadow Street Storm Water Separation Project.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign, and it's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Very good. The Commissioner again with the request to authorize the mayor to sign an engineering design contract for a water distribution main replacement. This is on 18 to 32 of your packet.
Yeah, so we, we did RFPs for engineering services for the, the water lines that will be replaced with the, with the recently passed bond. Otter Creek Engineering came in with the lowest number, and we're, we've worked with them many times before, and we asked for authorization for the mayor to sign a contract with them to not exceed $90,595.
Very good.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the, to authorize the mayor to sign the engineering design service contract with Otter Creek Engineering in the amount not to exceed $90,595 to design the replacement of obsolete water distribution main in 11 locations throughout the city.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign, and it's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Alderman McCann?
I think I heard that those funds would be coming from the, the bond amount. Do we need to kind of specify in the motion that it comes from there?
This, this is going to be paid for at the Water Distribution Capital Fund. That way, we can use the bond for the work.
Okay.
To actually get more done.
So I, I'll glad to add that to the motion, that it's the Water Distribution Fund.
Is the seconder okay with that?
Yes.
All right. Seconder is okay. Any additional discussion or debate?
Just add that Center Street was added to this list.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And the Commissioner, one more time with a request to authorize an RFQ for water, wastewater, and CSO stormwater engineering services. This is on page 33.
Yeah, as part of the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, they require us to, to have pre-approved engineering firms for upcoming projects. We don't have any projects in the works, but they, our RFQ engineering firm process expires this month, so we wanted to have authorization to move ahead with an RFQ process.
Very good.
Move to suspend the rules and deal with the matter tonight?
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Authorization to issue a request for qualifications, RFQ for water, wastewater, and S- CSO stormwater engineering services.
Second.
So we have a motion to authorize the issuing of an RFQ. That's been seconded. Alderman McCann?
And just to clarify, are we granting authorization to the Commissioner or the mayor, or is it just sort of a broad authorization?
Authorization to seek RFQs.
Okay. All right. Gotcha.
Any additional questions or discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next is Treasurer Markowski with the treasurer's report for the city and RRA. As of August 31st, this was emailed to you.
Hi, everyone. I emailed this out yesterday. I apologize, just running, just covering a lot right now. So generally, you would have had this packet two weeks ago, so because we're at the end of September, I'm not going to spend a lot of time analyzing two months of revenue and expenses. But if you have any questions on the financial reports, please feel free to ask me. We have a lot going on in the office, but I will quickly go over some of the material. You'll notice we had pretty high cash balances at the end of August. We finished that, not quite finished, that first quarter collection. So, and we also received, we had the bonds that were voted on in March, so we had some of that bond money come in, not just March, but part of a streets bond that was approved several years ago. So we had funds come in for that, so that was good. Also, when you're looking at cash, we pay the school quarterly about 3.4 million, so that's in the cash balance. So you'll see that go out at the end of September. You'll see a change there. The delinquency report as of October 31st, total prior year property tax delinquency, 1.1 million. Having said that, I have reached out with a tax sale attorney, and we've scheduled, I think, eight or nine properties, working with one attorney and possibly another one to start that process on some of those higher balances that haven't been making payments for several years.
Alderwoman Davis?
So are they real estate or water sewer?
Property tax mostly. There might be a couple with some water and sewer, but mostly past due property tax. Delinquent water and sewer balances at 271,000. I don't have the comparative, but I can tell you it's significantly lower than what we had been seeing because of the water shut off in the collection process. We have a whole bunch of people on payment agreement, so somebody's monitoring that. But that's, that's a good feeling that we're getting people caught up on that, so. Pooled cash, we're going to keep looking at this this year because this is a problem. When you look at the pooled cash, the sewer fund, transit fund, and the parking fund, they just keep getting a little worse every year when we're looking. We've got to make some really good gains this year. What are we going to do? I think the sewer fund, when you look at the sewer fund, it has improved because we received a little bit of funding back from a project that we were doing, so we needed reimbursement. We also are, will be seeing the impact of the rate change. Remember, the water rate maybe stayed flat. Sewer went up, so we should see a little bit of improvement there, but that sewer fund had a lot, lot of impact from increased costs in that fund. So that one's a tough one. That one's going to take a while to, to recover. But that one, parking fund, we talk about parking fund all the time. We got to move on it. What are we going to do with that? I think the budget changes that were made last year should help kind of the, some of those expenses. We should see some improvement there, but at the same time, revenues do not support this fund, and we continue to budget a fund in a deficit. We're never going to catch up. So we really have to make some tough decisions on the parking fund. And then we'll go to the transit fund. And that one's a little bit better when I was analyzing for the annual report, a little bit better than prior year, but not a lot. Really got to figure out what we're going to do there. It's not, it's not getting, it's not improving. Those funds are not, so. I think they're both in committee, so maybe it's time to get together and brainstorm. What are the ideas for these funds? Because they're, they're getting to a point where it's difficult for the general fund to support, continue to support these funds. That balance sheets, when you look at balance sheets, we're always looking at that unassigned fund balance. It's about 2 million. I still have several year-end adjustments, so I don't know where that will land for, truly for the end of June. I'm thinking it's a little bit lower than what I anticipated, but when we were doing the tax rate, so. The budget reports, income and expenses, just two months in, so we won't get into a great deal there. I did look things over, didn't see anything that of concern with two months in, but we'll look a little bit closer after the first quarter. The water and sewer funds, of course, don't reflect any billing yet because we bill that in September. I'm going to move right on to, because I've kind of hit the proprietary funds. So the RRA, the cash balance is at 112,000. The RRA has funds set aside for a grant, 7,900 for a grant, 19,000 in business development, 26,000 in administrative reserve. And when I look at the end of the year, because we were without that executive director position, I think we rolled over about 48,000 excess from that fund. So we'll be looking at that and meeting with Ed Bove on that, on what, what we want to do with that funds. We need to assign those so that they're available for these, for projects and stuff, so we'll be looking at that. Other notes that I wanted to make sure and share tonight, Sullivan Powers, they'll be here first two weeks in November to start the city audit. They do start it a little bit late. It gets, by the time March comes, I'm like, are we done yet? So I'm preparing for that. We have a pension meeting next week, Thursday, here at 5:30. We'll have the investment officer back just to review where we stand. It's been a difficult market, so keep an eye out for that. Then I also wanted to mention, there was, we did a lot of lease activity there in August. I feel like, my goodness, we were dealing with so many vehicles. The BCI vehicles, remember that? We purchased two Chevy Equinox. That was the plan, right? The vendor had everything all together. Oh, those vehicles will be in, and we were just notified that, guess what? Those vehicles are no longer available. So Ryan at the police department is working with the vendor, so found two suitable replacements. So we're going from an Equinox to a Trailblazer. Price is pretty close, a little bit less even. But I do want to, I wouldn't change a lease without sharing that with, with you. Because that's lower, still two new vehicles, I think the leasing company I'm working with is going to do an addendum to the lease, to the lease that was signed, but I wanted you to be aware of that, so.
Any questions for the treasurer? Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks.
Moving on to reports of standing committees. First, we have Alderwoman Davis with a report from the Finance Committee meeting of September 19th. There's the copy of this report along with the presentation that was given on pages 34 to 53 of your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Committee met September 19th at 5:30. Members President Ralston, Adam Savage, McCann, Barbara Gallo, and Chairman Davis. Also President Mayor Dungeons, President Talbot, Alderman Hooker, Treasurer Markowski, Andrew Trinsky for building and zoning, and our topic was GovPilot. And to review to date, I'm sorry, and to review to date the program that began 9/12/22 via a slideshow. This is included in your packet. Originally, five modules were purchased, and we currently are at 39. These modules are available via the city website or downloading an application to your phone. The total cost for the three years will be $197,750. Eventually, there will be just a maintenance cost for this program. The modules include, we have 10 for the clerk's office, 10 for GPW, five for building permits, six for zoning, and two non-public forums. The one that's probably the most popular is Report a Concern. This is a high user, but needs to show better response. And what we mean by this is folks will put a concern in, but there's not always follow-through appropriately to know whether that issue's been resolved, and so this is going to be worked on by the administration. On the horizon, permits via a customer portal, business registration and employment opportunities, to name a few, will become available. The benefits, it creates a property raise database, allows archiving of information, and should create some staff efficiencies. To the taxpayers, it creates a better accessibility to forms and documents, better access to information, better and quicker service, greater transparency and streamlining processes. We should see increased revenue to offset some of our costs for this GovPilot as well. Going forward, a presentation of the modules will occur at a board meeting to encourage more public awareness as our utilization is low. Some of the modules that you could get just simply from the clerk's office would be birth and death certificates, dog licenses, entertainment, land requests, liquor, peddler, marriage, special events, tax, et cetera, et cetera. So if you have an opportunity, go onto the city's website, GovPilot, and, or download the app and see what's available.
Very good. And I will say, as a user of GovAlert who expressed concern that while reports are being closed, I wasn't finding out the resolution, that seems to have been resolved. It was an issue with something, GovPilot, a field not filling, but I filed a report recently and received a response from the code enforcement officer when the, the report was closed. Mayor Dungeons, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, so, you know, it was the most lively part of our committee meeting was that discussion and all perfectly very valid concerns. So we took it, we took it to heart and addressed it pretty quickly. So as President Talbot said, there was a technical issue. So while in some cases, there were responses and people just got a blank email saying, "Your ticket's been closed," there's actually data in there that wasn't being presented. So I believe that's been resolved. So I believe that's been resolved. The second piece is, we're going to be having internally every other week, a review meeting of all of the pending and recently closed reported concerns. This is going to be with the key stakeholders, so those people that are primarily responsible for working on those, as well as a few other people who don't necessarily work on reported concerns, but can have insight when we're having those discussions. So it's going to be a little bit more of an active, an active review every two weeks as we go through that, so that should help alleviate some of those issues as well.
Great, thank you.
It's a good opportunity for folks to report a concern, especially if they feel that the offices are closed at night, and they can take that opportunity at the time, at the moment, and upload that information. So I encourage folks to get more comfortable with it, and I think it's helpful to department heads in the city to know what's happening in your neighborhood.
I agree. Alderman McCann?
Yeah, and I'll just add, so in terms of the efficiency by moving some of this to the website, there was a little bit of discussion about moving away from paper forms and the fact that that will help make sure that we don't miss things when people are filling out their forms, that they're filled out correctly. And if folks don't have access to the web at home, or don't want to figure out the new form themselves, they can go to the zoning and building office. They've got a screen in their front desk to be able there, and people who know how to use the system. So folks who are used to doing paper and want to get walked through the digital version, they can do that pretty easily.
Good addition. All right, next up, we have Alderwoman Tadio with a report from the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting of September 21st. This is on page 54.
Committee members present were myself, Alderwoman Hooker, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman McCann, and Alderwoman McClure. Others present were Mayor Dungus, President Talbot, Treasurer Markowski, Nicole Kesselring, Alderman Barbara Gallo, Alderman Gillum, Mary Cohen, Kathleen Kravetsky, Ed Bove, and Gordon Trichello. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to receive a presentation on the results of the College of St. Joseph's study and to discuss whether Rutland is a destination city. Nicole Kesselring presented the results of the College of St. Joseph's study. Cedar did a study in July 2022 and received 90 responses from the community. The results were that Rutland residents desire more housing options. Kesselring Consulting worked to design three different concepts for varying density housing projects. Some limitations on the project were the existence of wetlands, historic buildings, and Act 250 permitting. The option contract to purchase the land from CSJ expired in February 2023, and the land was sold to another buyer. This presentation was for informational purposes only. Next, the committee discussed whether Rutland is a destination city and other categories the city could be considered. Alderman McCann led the committee in a productive conversation. The committee first spoke to how they wish the city to be viewed in the next 10 years. Words included "community," "welcoming," "lifestyle destination," "housing," "recreational tourism," "diversity," "affordability," "bikeability," and "walkability." Alderman McCann handed out a sheet of paper with varying types of city and asked the committee to consider what Rutland currently is and what direction the community would like to see Rutland head. It was emphasized that the Rutland community would like to continue to support the working-class nature of our city while encouraging recreational tourism and increased housing opportunities. This report is also for informational purposes only, and the meeting adjourned at 6:24 PM.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Alderman Gillum with a report from the Recreation Committee meeting of September 25th. This was emailed, and I believe placed on your desk.
Yes, it is on your desk. Recreation Committee had a meeting on September 25th. Members present, Alderman Woman, Davis, Savage, McClure, Alderman Adams, and Gillum. Others member, other members present were Barbara Gallo, Cupola, Tablet, and Hooker. Others present were Superintendent of Rec, Kim Peters, Tyler, the Maintenance Director, and the Treasurer, Markowski, and the Rutland Herald, Gordon. The meeting started at 5:30 in the conference room. The two issues that we dealt with that night was the Raha contract update and approve to be made to the full board, and the second one was Main Street update on where the project is and the cost estimates. Superintendent Peters briefed the committee on the city of Rutland's Raha ICE rental agreement for the season of 2324 for the Giorgetti Arena. The fees will be $185 per hour, and they agreed to 180 hours, so the estimate right now is about $33,000 for the scheduled hours, and the rink will be open to the general public also on top of that. The agreement is attached with your packet and has been reviewed by the city attorney. Alderman Davis moved to the full board for approval to authorize the mayor and the Superintendent of Recreation to sign the City of Rutland Recreation Department Raha ICE rental agreement, and it was passed 5-0 in ISO move.
So we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Superintendent Peters and Maintenance Director Dolphin briefed the committee on the update on the Main Street Park renovation project. Two bids came in over $700,000, which is over the authorized HARPA fund approval by the board. The funds were $400,000 to work with. The plan was to develop in phases possible steps to move forward and complete the exe-
Gazebau.
Thank you, Gazebau, thank you very much, as phase one, and plan what the priorities will be for phase two, or if we need possible phase three. Russell Corporation has been hired as a consultant planning for $2,500 to assist in management and planning of the new plan, what will be the first phase. Therefore, the issue will remain in committee, work out the plan with the department for what will be the next steps to proceed with the project. Once the plan is decided, it will be moved to the recommendation to proceed to the full board for approval and how the funding shortfalls will be completed with the project. And this remains in committee, and the committee adjourned on 6:05.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Next, we'll move to reports of representatives. So first, we actually need a motion to formalize the appointment of Alderman Adams as the board's rep to the Otter Creek CUD. Alderman Adams was appointed back in March, but at the time, it wasn't clear that there was a formal appointment form. That's on page 55 of your packet.
So move.
Do we need to suspend the rules?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move that appointment.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to authorize the appointment, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, aye, I'll come in afterwards.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Gillum?
I would like to give Alderman Adams a first order of business. Apparently, the wires are still hanging, the extra dead wires are still hanging off all our poles. It'd be nice if they would remove them, because some of them are falling into the street, so if you could just mention that to them, to get the contract to come back and clean up what they didn't finish.
And then, I don't know if Alderman Adams wants to say anything, but a copy of their annual report and 2024 budget is included in your packet for informational purposes. You good?
I'm good.
Great. Next, reports of select committees. We have none. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, nothing on the agenda. That brings us to unfinished business. Any members of the board have unfinished business to bring up? Seeing none, miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business? Alderwoman Hooker?
If I may, I'd just like to give the thank you to Commissioner Peters and to Tyler Dolan for addressing a concern that some users of the Goddick Center had with regard to the lighting up there. The lighting seemed to be inadequate. Tyler went up and changed the bulbs, increasing the lumens, cleaned the globes, and voila, there was light.
Excellent. Alderman Gillum?
So to add on what you just said, Giorgetti Park also has put all new LED lights in, so it's much brighter down there now, too.
Very good. Alderwoman McClure?
Yeah, a local downtown business owner brought this up to me recently. There is a lot that is across from the courthouse on Merchants Row, and that lot has a pretty large stone wall that runs against the property. As far as the business owner is aware, that stone wall is owned by the city, and they had an idea for about a foot piece of that wall to be shaved down. Over at Giorgetti Park, perfect segue, thank you, Alderman Gillum, there is a bike repair station that is free for people to use. It's got all the little things you need to fix a flat, put a chain back, that sort of thing, and it is wall-mounted, and the owner of this business was wondering where they would start to even entertain a potential of another bike repair station being placed closer to downtown, maybe on that stone wall spot. I would move to refer that to a committee, but I'm not sure which one that would handle that.
What is the board's pleasure?
I'm sorry, I'm confused. Somebody wants a business to be developed right there?
No, the business is already there. The bike shop is right there, and this would be a bike repair station, very similar to the mountain bike repair station that's located.
Like, just like some tools that are available out?
Exactly. They're free for everyone to use, they're public use, they just sort of hang off the side of the wall.
I guess I would move to refer that to recreation.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
So we have a motion. Does anyone want to second the motion to refer?
I'll second for debate.
Okay.
And the only reason I'd like to, is I don't know if that's not a retaining wall.
Right.
I don't know what it is, and I think we need to determine what the wall is and why is it there. It's been there for 100 years. I don't know why it's there, but if it's a retaining wall for a purpose, I think before we carve a part out, we might want to know what it is. I don't know.
That sounds like a great discussion for committee. Alderman Gillum?
I think that should go to Public Works, because it's part of the sidewalk structure, so.
Sure, to Public Works.
Tell move.
Second.
All right, so the motion has been amended to be a referral of this to Public Works, and the seconder seems fine with that amendment. Any additional discussion on the referral? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Alderman Gillum?
New business? I've been getting a lot of phone calls of people just squatting on empty lots and empty properties in the northwest neighborhood, Pine Street, Cleveland, Baxter. We're having a real serious problem with these empty homes that are not, the landlords are not taking care of them. We're going to have to push the button here and start dealing with this, because winter's coming, and the neighbors are really raising hell right now. So we need to send a committee, I'm not sure, Public Safety probably.
Well, if, I didn't want to interrupt.
Good.
I think the problem is, is the properties are not secured, and that falls on your building and zoning in the city. So I'm glad to send it to Public Safety, but I think there's a lot of conversation that has to be had, and I don't know, I don't want to sound like it's a complaint, but if you take a ride around the city, you're seeing more garbage, you're seeing more unregistered cars, you're seeing grass is not mowed. I don't know why this is happening, but it certainly isn't sending a positive vibe to those neighborhoods to say, don't come here, you know, we don't want crime and et cetera here, because we're not looking as good as we can look. And so I think there's a big picture to go with it. So I'll gladly refer it to Public Safety and have that information, but I want this board to know that that discussion is going to be a little bit broader than just what Billy said, because I don't, and all due respect to building and zoning, I don't know what's happening there. I have talked to Andrew a few times, I have lodged some concerns with some properties. I don't know if it's just workflow and not able to get to it. I don't want to say that they're not doing their job, but I'm seeing more and more and more of it occurring, and I think we've got to get a handle on it.
Very good. So we have a motion to refer this to Public Safety.
Yep, second.
It's been seconded. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? That brings us to the executive session motions. So, motion one, to find that premature general public knowledge regarding negotiation of a labor relations agreement would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the board's position on the agreement provisions to be negotiated.
So move.
Second.
All right, so we have that motion, it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And motion two, to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, police chief, treasurer, clerk, and city attorney to discuss the labor relations agreement as allowed under Title I, Section 313A, 1B.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.